Drew you to school committee member Lay. What happens in six years to those units is they change a lot. So that report is basically obsolete. It's not something that you can entertain today because you may have sent staff to fix things. Now it changes that report and also pricing has changed. And by doing it, what happens is one of your staff would go with someone who basically goes in and will investigate the whole unit, will show your staff what communicates, and they'll go through it. So at the same time, you're going to end up saving money in the long run rather than just throwing money at things and moving the pieces that way. So I think recommissioned reports are extremely important. And in the real world in facilities, normally HVAC units are recommissioned every five years so that you know what's working, what's obsolete, how you can get parts, and what you can do. So I think recommissioned reports are extremely important in any industry that runs an HVAC system. So it's just that the city doesn't implement that in their policies. So the policy should be, units should be recommissioned every five to 10 years so you know exactly its life expectancy, what parts you can still obtain, and how useful they'll be in the future. So a six-year-old report actually isn't the time that it would be redone anyway.
So...
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if we have to do the report, do more studying, are we putting any project on hold? Are we going to wait until the report come out? And would that delay the final result of what we want to achieve?
Well, I think we'll speak to the whole committee on this because we had already budgeted, I believe it was $350,000 for this HVAC assessment, and this report would be instead of that. Is that correct?
Yes. Here's the thing. It's like, we understand what the goal is here. We can't spend foolishly. We can't let this money burn a hole in our pocket, as some would say. Put the money on hold for now. Get a playbook that both sides are in agreement on, and let's start attacking. Instead of like, oh, well, we followed a six-year-old recommendation. It costs $2 million to do this. We find out, it's changed. We could have did something more efficient that that's different cost, lower cost. Let's get something current, very current, that both sides are in agreement to. And let the powers that be designate the priorities. Again, both sides have buckets of money, arpan essa, that we don't control. Let somebody come in and say, here is a comprehensive look at the facilities. This is a comprehensive best practice moving forward. These are our suggestions, recommendations. I mean, we have a lot of resources. I hear in the past, this is a different administration, it's a different council, it's a different school committee. Everyone is willing to do it, and we have the money to do it, so let's do it right. That's really what it comes down to, no more, no less. So I mean, if going out and spending, regardless of the cost, of a comprehensive study, we get that back, we have a playbook. We haven't had that in the past. This side has had a playbook, this side has had a playbook. The Collins report made recommendations. It never got followed. Unfortunately, money was wasted in the past. Let's not waste another penny.
Thank you. We're really, we're at 6:32, and respect for, we have our school committee meeting. I would like to give Mr. Underwood an opportunity to weigh in.
So, and I, all great points, and I think, you know, the more knowledge we get is the more... But I also just reminded me, there's a timeline on this money that has to be spent.
Right.
So, you know, we have to, we have to look at, do we have time, you know, for the full report? Are we going to have, are we going to have the commitment on the city side to make the report worthwhile? You know, the 14, $15 million, the city, the school department side, we've got that allocated in projects that we're intending to move forward with. So are we going to get a, are you going to wait for a report that not going to get implemented, and the money's going to dry up because there's no time left to spend it? So I'm just going to end with that. Just remember, there's a timeline on this. And I'm not opposed to reports. It's just there's a lot of information we have right now, and I agree. I want to spend the money in the best possible way. The last thing I want to do is to see it dry up and go away before we make any decisions. We've been pushing this, a lot of different things, down the road for the last year now, and there is a timeline on this money. Thank you.
And I'd just like to ask, Mr. Byrne, are we, you mentioned that we're work moving forward with multiple contractors for four or five schools currently around HVAC issues. We're waiting, we're adding chillers for the pine, and they'll start closing. Can we still move forward with those priority projects while we're getting this additional information?
Absolutely. We're moving forward while we're getting this information. But I just want to touch on one base. The city's made a big commitment. MSBA, everything. $15 million for the schools? God love you. Keep giving us more money, okay? But let me tell you this, right? The city has made a $91 million commitment. MSBA funding, Opera funding, capital improvements funding, and we're going to continue to make that. So I just want to make it crystal clear. The city is on board spending money. The city is on board making our schools safe. The city is on board making school improvements. This administration, this council's on board. So I just want to be crystal clear here, and I'm speaking, I think, on behalf of the city manager.
Thank you so much for that assurance. That goes a long way for me. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and we're out of time, so can we do a roll call?
Roll call, please, yes.
Chair Person, Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Chair Person, Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Gitcher?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Six shades approved.
I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. ...
Thank you.
Council Robinson, seconded by Committee Woman Del Rossi. All of them in favor?
All approved. Councilor Gitcher, watch out for that foul ball.
(laughter)
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 Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for what it stands under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mia Chow.
Here.
Ms. Chun. Mr. Rossi. One absent. Oh, six present.
We have a special treat tonight under the special order of business and the mayor, the superintendent, and the entire school committee members would like to welcome the I don't know if you've got that, the chorus group from the Robinson School led by Levy. At this point, I'm gonna have you maybe come closer inside the chamber and Mr. Superintendent could briefly give a quick remark.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just tried it with the microphone to test run it and it seems like there's some kind of distance with the microphone. It wasn't allowing me to work inside. You guys want to try it again?
Or you could use my microphone.
You want to use this? Oh, wow. You want to hear the mayor's microphone? You get a...
You can come to the camera and use this microphone here. Okay, might be something like that, but capture your voice, you think?
Yeah.
Testing.
I don't know if it's working.
Testing, testing.
You can just hold them just like they're, just like you're holding a regular microphone. You don't have to be as sensitive with them.
Hello, everybody. My name is Levi Dennis. I'm a paraprofessional at the Robinson Middle School. I'm also the Performance Arts Director. Today I brought Jayla Velez and Cindy St. Orange to sing the National Anthem. They're part of the Robinson Performance Arts Team, two of the hardest working kids that I know. So, without further ado, let's salute to the flag.
Ready? Okay. We have to get a different camera. You're looking at their back.
Let's see. Give us a second. You'll see him right here. As soon as you see the right camera come up, you can start. There you go.
Okay, three, two, one. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we am at the twilight's last gleaming whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight, all the ramparts we watch were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
The members, the members, come on, the members. They'll be in the middle. All the members can be outside.
Great job, girls. I'm very proud of you.
Yeah, that sound's so beautiful. Great, you have this up perfectionless.
Thank you.
Great job, great job.
Want to recognize our students, thank our parents and family members for sharing your young people's talent with us tonight, and certainly Levi and our educators that helped coordinate that good work. Sometimes people think that the National Anthem is an easy song to sing because you hear it so often, but I will tell you, it is anything but. Very difficult song to sing, but when it's sung well, those of us that have lots of experiences with that song, it brings bumps to your arms, goosebumps to your arms, and you did that for me, brought chills to me, and I'm just so very proud to be your superintendent. So, thank you for sharing your wonderful talent with us this evening. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank Levy, Jayla, and Cindy. That was beautiful, and that was quite a treat right in the middle of summer, so I appreciate that a lot. Thank you. We now continue to the agenda for the minutes. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of July 13, 2022, and the special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of July 13, 2022, and August 3, 2022, and to place them on file by Ms. Chun, second by Ms. Doherty, on first, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to five. Permission to enter. Any comments, any suggestions? Hear none. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Lay, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Before the members vote and take a motion, this is a lengthy PTE document because it's the first prior to the start of the school year, but there were a couple of offsets just in the lines, so I want Ms. Turner to be able to give you a little bit of clarification on a couple procedural clarifications, but it's important for the minutes. Ms. Turner, if you could?
We want to correct the Carol Center for the Blind. It had indicated that it was funded through food service, which is not true. It's actually funded through the out-of-district local budget account, and we wanted to correct the New England accent that we said ESSA. Someone described the funding source as ESSA on the community teamwork number, I mean, page eight. It's not ESSA, E-S-S-A, it's S-R-E-S-S-E-R, and we do have to clarify that being that ESSA does exist. So, I just wanted to point out those two changes. And one other clarification, the part-time seats will be $30 instead of $40 per day.
Any comments or questions? Any further comments, Mr. Superintendent? Hear none. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Memorials. We would like to have a moment of silence for Ms. Susan Nardle, Booty School Paraprofessional. Please dim the light. We now go to seven motions. Seven point one is a motion by me that was brought to the school committee from the city council that was put forth by Councilor Rourke, and it was unanimously voted and approved. The motion is to request the school committee temporarily waive the ad hoc subcommittee requirement under policy FF and authorize the superintendent to begin the process of naming the basketball court at Lowell High School after Ramon Rivera, second by Ms. Morn. Any comments, questions on this matter? Ms. Morn?
Fine to be second, that's fine. I do think that we should probably consider that the ad hoc naming does have another function in that it does go back in the history to determine what else has been named, like in the Ray Riddick Field House. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that gets named at the, at the high school.
Sure.
So, I do think that, you know, I certainly think, you know, the impetus behind this, I absolutely support, you know, having known the individual and graduated with them. I think it's absolutely appropriate. But I do think that in terms of process, having the ad hoc subcommittee go through their process of research and, and kind of making sure all our Ts are crossed, to me, makes sense. So, I don't know if there was a, if there's a time crunch to this that the council was aware of that we're not, I think we should be made aware of it, but if not, I think it, I don't, you know, I don't understand what the, what the, what the rush is. Thanks. Rush is the word I was searching for.
Yeah, and there might not be any rush, and from my understanding, I don't think the council, neither do myself, mind of if it's the request of the members here to make amendments to this motion to go through the ad hoc subcommittee to satisfy the school committee policy, to do the research in order to name the gym in a proper way, you know, I would be, and I would ask the council to support that as well. Any other comments or question? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that on the writing, it says Corey Robinson, Councilor Robinson, but you mentioned Rourke. I just want to make a minor adjustment, what I heard and what I see on the paper, and also I would...
Didn't say Councilor Rourke?
You did say Rourke.
Right.
I heard you said Rourke, but anyway, I'm supporting Ms. Martin's idea.
Okay. Right, so... Say, we should refer this to the subcommittee, not necessarily withdraw, but maybe have a, maybe refer, refer this. Would you want to make a motion to refer this to the ad hoc subcommittee? Okay. Would you like to make a substitute motion, Ms. Morn?
I would, with the, with the support of the mayor, I would make a substitute motion that the school committee vote to empower the mayor to create an ad hoc naming subcommittee that will be charged with determining the naming of the new basketball court.
Second by Ms. Doherty. See something to do a roll call on? Madam Secretary? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, the ayes have it. The motion is carried. Seven point two by Ms. Thompson, request to the superintendent regarding prior ongoing or the establishment of anti-racism training at the administration and principal level to continue to support the work of equity in the district. This is to be a complement to the, to any bias, racism, or discrimination work being carried out, implemented in the district. This training to then be made accessible for professionals throughout the district, second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Thompson?
This motion was made because I think that there's a lot of work being done through the teachers and the school level, but I think that it's really important that the district is not just doing discrimination work, and I think that's really easy to do. Anti-racism work is another level. It's a deeper level of work and a deeper level of commitment to move the, to move this district forward. I think that we can be kind of starting that as a, as a pilot, or as a, I should say, as a lamppost in the state. So, I think it's really important that we buy into that. I think it's important that we do that work. I would actually ask to amend this motion to include the school committee as well, take part in that said training. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hear none. On the favors, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Seven point three, motion by Mr. Lay and Mr. Rossi to request the superintendent to request the city CFO to provide a report with the following each year for the last five years. Chargeback that the city charged against the school's contribution in the school budget, and also the actual amount that the city spent. One, list all the chargeback category that the city has charged against the school contribution. Two, itemized descriptions for each chargeback for each category. Three, chargeback amount for each item and total for each category. Four, what are the actual amount that the city spent for each item? Five, what accountability and measures taken to ensure accuracy? Mr. Lay or Mr. Rossi, who would like to go first?
May I want to go first?
Mr. Lay?
Thank you. Mr. Rossi and I have spoke in the past in regarding to chargebacks and trying to understand more. The motion pretty much speaks for itself, but the reason behind all of this is that in order to understand, we need to see all of that to, so that we understand more on what the chargeback is and how it was being charged back. Mr. Rossi, would you like to...
Are you done, Mr. Lay?
I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi, would you like to make a comment? Any other comment? Hear none. On the favors, say aye, oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to seven point four. Motion by Mr. Lay and Ms. Thompson, request superintendent to provide the following report listed by school to the school committee twice yearly in first meeting of March and November, in an effort to keep track of the diversity hiring gains as they pertain to racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity. One, the total, the total of teachers per race ethnicity by school. Two, the total of paraprofessionals per race ethnicity. Three, a chart configuration of percentage change. In addition, a once- or twice-yearly presentation by the district HR department on strategies, successes, and misses. Who would like to go first, Mr. Lay or Ms. Thompson? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this motion speaks for itself. We have, I think our schools have been doing a great job in term of trying to address the diversity staff in our schools. So, but this data would help us understand the progression that we make each year, and it will only help us identify what we need to do. And in order to understand further, I want to add one more. If Ms. Thompson and if everybody agree, maybe two point one, I would, I would like to add the number of students as well. So, to understand the diversity that reflect our community, we want to see the number of teachers, but we also want to see the number of students. So, with everybody agreement, I would want to ask to add two point one, the number of students.
Okay, so that'd be an addendum, okay by you? Ms. Thompson?
I thought that the school already supplied that information, but if it does not, then that's a fine addition for me.
Amendments, so that we'll, we'll accept that. But, Ms. Thompson, do you have any comments?
You know, from the very beginning, before I even ran, the diversity of staff was a huge, a huge issue for me, and I know for my, my colleagues. Really important because representation matters, and I know that there are efforts now ongoing for how to make diversity hires, and kind of they've, they've done things outside the box, but I think there needs to be a mechanism to kind of check in on that, you know, a mechanism to make sure that if things are missing, or there are misses, then how do we kind of rebound and move this forward? I think it's really important for, it's important for us to have a mechanism as a school committee to see what's happening, other than having to constantly make motions. So, that's kind of what the purpose of this was.
I think to help our colleague out, I do believe Ms. Del Rossi already provided a report out on this according to our amendments from the last meeting. So, if we're unable to connect via Zoom, Mr. Mayor, I believe that report out already occurred at the prior meeting.
Yes, sorry, I lost volume for a second, but we, we discussed, and it's great, we discussed talking about the Family Leadership Institute and really reaching out to different language, which is in assuring that everybody has equal access to all the resources that the family really offers out there. And Ms. Martin had requested that it be vetted, well, be vetted through also the adult education, and it was used as, the meeting was just brought as a progress of, report, a report of progress. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. We had a first and second on it to accept it as the report of progress. On the favors, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to eight point two, Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee Meeting on Wednesday, July 2022. It was chaired by Ms. Morn. Ms. Morn?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, attending the subcommittee were, again, myself, Ms. Del Rossi, Mr. Lay, and we also had other members from the school committee, including Mia Chow, Ms. Chun, and Ms. Doherty. We had a single topic at this, at this subcommittee meeting, and it was for the superintendent to provide us with his portfolio of artifacts for his evaluation. We had basically given the superintendent an opportunity to present to the committee. There were a number of questions that, that came up, and the superintendent was able to answer them, and then the committee was able to move forward. And at our special meeting last week, we concluded the evaluation process. So, I'd submit this as a report of progress.
Any other comments or question? Hear none. Need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Rossi, second by Mr. Lay, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The last subcommittee report is a Joint Curriculum and Policy Subcommittee Meeting on July 27, 2022, co-chaired by Ms. Morn and Ms. Doherty. Which one would like to go first?
I'd actually defer to Ms. Doherty. She had run the meeting expertly.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Yes, the Joint Curriculum Instruction and Policy and Governance Subcommittee met on Wednesday, July 27. Curriculum members present included chairperson Ms. Martin and Ms. Del Rossi. Policy and Governance members present included Ms. Dar, me, and Ms. Del Rossi. And Mr. Lay was also available. And from the school department personnel, we had Ms. Dedman, Desmond, and Ms. Phillips. So, the purpose of the meeting was to review and discuss the first reading of the update to the graduation requirements policy for Lowell High School. And we did discuss some of the changes and a phased-in approach for the class of 2026 and the class of 2027. We would require an additional year of math, not necessarily Algebra II, an additional year of social studies, which would be world history, an additional year of science. And then the next phase would be for the class of 2028. They're seeking to phase in additional requirements that they're not proposing at this time. So, that would includes Algebra II, one fine arts course, and a flexible path towards graduation. So, Ms., oh, I forgot to mention, Ms. Rothschild was there from the high school, as well as Mr. Fiatto, the head of schools. And the focus areas moving forward are expanding the faculty reexamination of course offerings, expanding credit recovery options and intervention support, increased vertical alignment, and providing flexible paths towards graduation. And I think overall, the committee was in favor of the idea of increasing the rigor and quality and the requirements at the high school so that they would be more aligned with mass core requirements, as well as local area colleges and what other nearby communities are requiring for high, to achieve a high school graduation. So, there are still a number of concerns. You know, we want to be competitive, but I think the idea of making sure our students are well-prepared in the elementary and middle school grades was discussed, as well as concerns about the, the issue of health as a requirement for performing arts students. But I think that just for the class of 2026 and 2027, which is the new school year, we're looking to, if my understanding is correct, just add an additional year of math for those kids to get a high school diploma, and additional year of social studies, and additional year of science. And so, we brought that forward for action for the committee tonight.
Any other comment?
Any other comments?
Ms. Morn?
Questions?
No, thank you very much, and thank you for your report, Ms. Doherty. I think one of the key things in this, this conversation is that we are talking about increasing the rigor and the, what it means. I mean, what a diploma from Lowell High School will ultimately really mean. And as I look at this, I think the key for us, the key for me, is understanding that this is not a, this is not a student problem. This is a grown-up problem. This is our problem to ensure that our students are properly prepared so that they will be successful in this new kind of paradigm. You know, the, the information I think that was shared with us at the, at the meeting, both from the administration, from the high school administration, you know, I think that they are on the right path, and I, you know, so I'm, I'm very supportive of that. I think some of the, the concerns that the, at the subcommittee was, was expressed and beyond, is this idea that, you know, if we make things too hard, our students won't be successful. And I just think that's wrong-headed thinking. I think our students... I think our students will be successful so long as we recognize, you know, the small role that the school committee plays in this, but far more importantly, the role that the administration, both centrally and at the high school, will play in ensuring that our students are successful. And to Ms. Doherty's point, at our middle schools and elementary schools too, none of this happens in a vacuum. I think setting a two-year course for, to allow us to get to this point of adding in the additional math, the additional social studies, I think these are critical skills that our students need to have. So I'm very supportive of that, equally supportive as we move forward in trying to determine how we incorporate, you know, a fine arts exposure, ensuring that, that health concerns are met. And I think one of the key things as we were having this conversation is that, I mean, we really need to, this isn't a matter of trying to wedge additional things into a school day. This is a matter of trying to fundamentally reexamine how we're providing this education, what our scheduling is like, what kind of opportunities our students and our teachers have, and being able to broaden the way they're able to access education and the materials that they need. You know, we talked a little bit about the, a concept of an idea of trying to build in kind of some almost certificate programs that would allow students to, in a maybe non-traditional day, be able to get additional exposure to areas of particular interest, whether it's interest of, that's driven by the student or whether it's almost a, looking at it from a career perspective. I mean, we have the opportunity and we have the, the kind of heft at Lowell High School to really be able to provide our students with an extraordinary opportunity. And I think if we're better able to tap into the talents of our, of our students, but also the talents of our staff, so that we're able to get the best for, out of both, for both, we could really look at this as an opportunity to reimagine what a high school education means in the city of Lowell and be able to do it in a way that is truly far-reaching and will have a profound impact on the quality of a Lowell High School diploma moving forward. My short answer is I support the move to implement Phase One. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I also support, because I think that adding one more year of those two subjects will not exceed the state requirement, nor will it make our program exceed the secondary school's requirement, but it definitely will make our graduates more competitive. Therefore, I support this move. Thank you.
So I also support the motion. I do have a couple of, I think, just points that I want us to make sure as we're moving forward, we're thinking about, because it's really easy to get excited about moving forward without thinking about the, what potential stumbling blocks there could be. I have, and I've repeated this and I, I'm sorry, but I'm going to continue to repeat, my, my serious concern for the Latinx population and what work is going to be done on our end to increase the rigor without leaving more people behind. And that's a huge, huge concern of mine. And I do think, to Ms. Martin's point, it is an us problem. It's an adult problem. We need to figure out how that is done. Mr. Fiatto had mentioned that there hadn't been really a reach out to the elementary and middle schools and I, again, think that is very problematic because they're going to be building the, the strength, the core, so that these, these students can then be successful. And then, I guess I was just agreeing with Ms. Martin a lot, because I also agree with the kind of idea of certificates, I call them achievement markers, that if you kind of create that, it's like moments of success for the students throughout the process. So as they're moving forward, they, they find themselves successful. It's been proven that if you do that, then students are really receptive to that. I think our biggest hurdle is communicating, communicating with one another, communicating with all measures and levels of staff, but also communicating with the parents, especially our populations that, if we don't do this right, could be most severely impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize. I forgot this one very important piece in reporting out on the meeting, and that is the part about the health requirement for performing arts students. The current plan, based on our initial approval back in January, then we met again in March, we had just minutes on it at that meeting, and then we met again like six months, six weeks later. We had a lot of concern, many of, but I'm just going to speak for myself, about taking away the health requirement for performing arts students, for dance students, show choir. So I don't think that has been addressed in any way that's compelling for me. The administration is, their new plan, which we discussed at the meeting and I forgot to report on, is to do a pilot study starting this year with the class that's starting in September, where they would look at it. I'm not in favor of a pilot study. I don't think we're going to get, you know, really significant data. It's kind of like, once we go on that path, it's going to be really hard to pull back on it. And I have felt very strongly from the beginning that especially in these times of anxiety and self-medication and stress and the difficulty of relationships and all those other things that our students are facing, we can't be pulling back from health. And no matter how you look at it, even if we train the teachers, it's going to be less time on the curriculum because it's going to be built into their performing arts class. So I would like to make a motion in support of the, the other changes for the school year, the adding of math, the adding of science, but I would separate out the health change in the health class requirement for a separate vote, because I'm not going to be able to support that. I honestly, I think we're all here, we're trying to do our best for our students, and when we look back, we want to say we did our best for our students, we worked hard, and I don't think this is best for our students. Whether it's a scheduling issue, a staffing issue, because they don't have enough health teachers, or they have too many performing arts teachers and not enough students picking performing arts, I don't really know what's behind it, other than, is it an adult issue or is it a student issue? And I don't think this is in the best interest of our students. I really don't. And so I would like to make as a motion that we support, that I would, you know, my motion is to support for the class of 2026 and 2027, the additional year of math, not Algebra, additional year of social studies, world history, and additional year of science, but not vote on that health requirement for this motion. And I would appreciate a second on that. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, did you get the, the whole motion? If you could read that back so that simplify for the rest of the...
To support adding math, science, and social studies for 2026, 2027, and to have the health component be a separate vote.
Second by Ms. Morn. Do we do a roll call on this one?
I would.
Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Before we, Mr. Rossi?
Ms. Del Rossi? Six shades, one absent.
I think there must be something wrong with the Zoom. Before we complete and adopt the motion to accept the report of progress, I was informed that out of that Subcommittee meeting, there was a, was that the same one? So if you were to adopt the, the report of progress, are we also taking up 10.1 already with that discussion?
Well, that is what they just voted on.
Okay. So that'd be that, okay. So we can take item 10.1 out of the agenda then?
I think it's, just for clarity, I think we have to actually take a vote on the item with the change. So, Mr. Mayor, it might be an opportune time just to suspend the rules, move up 10.1, given the discussion already occurred, and just take the formal vote on 10.1 at this time, if that's amenable by the committee.
Short motion by Ms. Doherty, take that out of order. Second by Ms. Morn. And the item, just for you to be clear, the item on the new business 10.1 is the consideration of update to graduation requirements policy, file number IKF.
Okay, so...
Can we take a roll call on that one as well?
Yeah. Are we voting on Ms. Doherty's motion or number 10?
Number, we just voted on Ms. Doherty's motion.
Perfect. I'm sorry.
And then now is 10.1.
I would suggest, Mayor, that you just duplicate the motion, apply it to 10.1, so it's not a report of progress and it's taken for actual adoption of the item. It's procedural at this point, the discussion carries, and I think Ms. Martin's concise description of it was, while concise, it was also comprehensive. So I would like that, that motion, that word's to stand in the minutes and then it's just a procedural vote.
Okay. That's agreeable by the committee members to adopt, to adopt the report of progress and to, on the item 10.1.
So it's the same motion just for item 10.1?
Correct.
I got it.
Okay. And so we don't need to do a roll call on that one, we just do a voice vote?
So it's the same motion again?
Okay. That's everybody, that's kind of confusing now.
I'm sorry, I jumped it on. I shouldn't have done it then.
I just, well, we just did a roll call on...
Yeah, for that.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm just going to make 10.1 then to, I'm just going to reiterate her motion underneath it. Is that okay? In the minutes?
One, four, clear. I'm good.
So we're not taking another vote?
Let's just do a roll call because we're going to have longer discussion before we go to just six of us.
Because we like to do roll calls.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Is the, so the roll call is on Jackie's motion again in 10.1?
Not, not...
This is for 10.1.
The change is reflected in 10.1?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
May I hear one more time what, what it is?
It's the motion that Ms. Doherty just stated, that's going to, it's going to be the updated graduation requirement policy as revised by Ms. Doherty.
Okay. I thought we voted on it already.
Right.
Again, okay. All right. Yes.
So you voted on the report of the minutes of your meeting, now you're adopting the graduation requirements.
Okay. All right. So yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Six shades, one absent.
Okay. And we're done with the, the report of progress also, right?
No, you need a first and a second for that. Now, do we need to make a motion regarding the health?
I thought we did, okay.
Well, I think we have to. I mean, we've implemented... Wait, 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 wait. Pilot has already been begun.
You're, you've, you approved it for this year's pilot, but it was removed from, it's a bullet within, I believe this motion would have taken the bullet within the graduation requirements, which was the third to last bullet that also lists dance band and show choir, and you just struck that red language. So it's red within the, so that those three words are struck from the policy based on the action you just took for the graduation requirement.
It's not part of the policy, but the pilot is being implemented.
Based on January's vote, where kids were already scheduled within, it's just not part of the graduation requirements as adopted tonight.
And that is an impressive bit of cap dancing.
Are they making a motion in that, in that Subcommittee?
It'll be it. Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Morn, there's no other motion, correct?
Okay, so now you just need a...
Now, we need a motion to adopt the report of progress by Ms. Chun, again by Mr. Lay, on the face of the I post, say no, the I's have it, motions carry. Thank you, I do wish now. We now go to nine reports of the superintendent. 9.1, update on school opening. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our last meeting prior to school opening and at this point in this, in the calendar, it's all hands on deck to ensure a flawless opening for our students. Mr. Skinner will give the committee a brief overview on the process that we undertake. At this point, we have no concerns for a smooth school opening. We are on track for a smooth school opening, but there's a considerable amount of work to occur. We're not ready to open school tomorrow, but we're on track to open school for the first day for our students. Mr. Skinner, can you take the committee through the work that's underway to make that sure that happens for all 14,500 young people in Lowell Public Schools?
Thank you. It's, yes, there's, there's no work more engaging, or engaging us more than preparing for school opening and it's helpful that I have the opportunity to share with you how we organize for that work. And beginning with the components of readiness, so what do we consider to be getting ready and what, what, what elements do we consider to be part of that, how we're tracking the progress and the timeline that we're following and where, where we are in that timeline. So the components of readiness are listed in these various categories and they involve all of my central office cabinet colleagues and just about everyone who's at work these days, from custodians to maintenance folks and curriculum office folks, everybody. We're engaged in school readiness in any one of these categories. As an example, under instructional support, these are some of the items that we track and are following. It's okay, I have it here. I'm following on my screen here with that, but under transportation is another example. We want to have bus, bus passes ready, students need to be informed of their bus routes and so on. You can see the items as they're listed. So these are just some of the examples of the kinds of individual elements that we track under the categories I gave you. And then we track readiness in a number of ways, but one of the main tracking devices is a spreadsheet that looks as, you have a segment of it on your screen just now. You've seen this in other years as well. We update it, modify it year to year with elements that are necessary. On the spreadsheet, you may recall, you can enter a one, a two, or a three in each of the cells. A one indicates that the item is completely finished and ready for opening, and so it turns the cell green. Three is the opposite end of the scale and number three in there turns the cell red and eventually becomes a wonderful visual to see where the issues remain. You can see at the top of the spreadsheet, there are the school names, so this includes a separate column for each school, and on down the left-hand side, each of the elements for each of the categories. There are more than 50 individual items that we, that we track. And for many of them, so one on the screen right now, building condition, interior readiness for students, for example, that alone encompasses several items, right? So we'll break it out even further. And part of the advantage of having an organized system like this is that we also can tell who is responsible for which of the elements and so I know who to go to. I meet weekly with the facility staff, I meet weekly with my colleagues at central office, and so we, we track week to week how we're progressing with it. And the timeline we follow and... The timeline, so you can see that beginning in the middle of July, we begin our coordination of these, this document you just looked at, we refer to as a dashboard. By yesterday, an initial assessment from the facilities folks on each of the buildings and where we, where we are with them. There was one delay in that. Today was the day that we did a complete, we spent quite a bit of time at Lowell High School to track and to progress monitor Lowell High School being ready for opening. By the end of this week, I'll have completed a visual inspection of all the facilities and then from the next week onwards, we will continue weekly updates, including visual inspection, including coordination with the, with the staff. Monday next, all principals and assistants return to, to duty, and that is step five. The dashboard so far that you looked at, the one with the, are colorful yellow, red, and green elements, we so far, central office, have been managing that. Once principals return next week, we turn that over to them and they're given the permission to, to change those individual cells. We want to say from central office, we've provided you all the math materials, for example, but we also then rely on the principal to say, yes, we've received all those math materials and so on. So they're, each principal is going to confirm that each of the elements is in place. School-based staff return on August 29th, and two days later, on the 31st, our students return. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. We're, we're prepared for questions if there are any. Otherwise, we submit it as a report of progress.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the... Thank you, Your Honor, thank you for the report. I do have a couple of questions, as we are looking at, I believe, 21 days till the start of school, three weeks. So I, I, I guess my first question, and this is kind of based on what happened last year, how many students, do we have a number of students that are not yet enrolled in schools? That we don't know where they're going yet, for whatever reason, missing documentation or anything like that?
Yes, at this point, we would have a, we would have a number of students that would not yet be assigned. Ms. Phillips, can you provide an update?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. As of last week, we had placed over 1,000 students for the 22, 23 school year. Of that number, about two, no, those are the numbers that have been placed, we have about 270 that are awaiting medical clearance. So we are working with the health department. Since summer programs ended, we do have a school nurse who is placed in the Family Resource Center. We had intended to have two, but in the end, we had one. So that person is working to read the cards that the families uploaded into the system. We also have a partnership with Lowell Community Health Center, where our FRC intern has called all of the families to see if we could provide their, their contact information to the Lowell Community Health Center, so that they could make the appointments directly with, with families. And we also have a health and immunization clinic coming up. I, I believe it's on the 27th, Saturday, the 27th, and so anyone on that list who has not been cleared is invited to come to, to that clinic to get immunizations on site. And I believe the high school students have a couple of additional dates, so that's information that we're communicating out to families, so that we can get the medical clearance as quickly as possible. And those are new things that we've done this year that we haven't done in, in prior years. We do have about 300 registrations that still need to be completed, and we have about 200 transfer requests. Those are families who already have a seat, but who are requesting a different placement. And so as of, as of, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, continue, sorry.
As of last week, we finally have a full team of clerks. So out of the four Family Resource Center clerks, two are new this summer due to retirements, and one is new this year. So we only have one kind of senior clerk, so it's a whole new team in the last couple of months.
If I could, just to clarify for the community, this is around new enrollees, new enrollment, not in terms of continued, continued enrollment in your current school, continued enrollment in your feeder schools. So when you hear a number of 1,000, we, we still are confident that our numbers will be largely stable to what we've seen in terms of population overall. So just wanted to make sure we're clear for the community, we're not talking a difference of 14,000 to 1,000, this is about new student enrollment.
And just to be clear that I understood, so we have 270 awaiting medical clearance, and there's a bunch of plans in place to help them get that clearance. The 300 registrations, so those students haven't been assigned to schools yet, as well as the 200 transfers, is that correct?
Right, they're being processed, but they may be missing documents, or just may need, they're in the queue to be processed.
So there's, all the other students, not those thousands, kind of rounded up to say a thousand, have been assigned, so every school knows who's on their rosters at this point, except for these ones that we've just talked about? Is that correct?
Not on August 10th, so we do, there's a continued data roll-up that occurs after summer school, summer school promotion decisions and so on. I believe, Mr. Skinner, that data roll-up is on August 15th, thereabouts?
Yes.
So when you go, so the data systems, 21 days out, this is all hands on deck, moving all of these things, so there's another step there where our schools will be able to go into the system and pull their roster. So by the time our principals come back on staff, yes, certainly, but that data roll-up occurs approximately the same day that our principals come back, and that's historic within Lowell Public Schools of that, that timeline.
That seems very tight for students, for principals to get their, their enrollment numbers and figure out their classes and all that, but I guess my other question, we're looking at the students, what are we doing in terms of our staff? Like what number of staff openings do we still have, if any? And, you know, what percentage is that overall? Because I know it's been a very difficult hiring season.
Yes, Dr. Hall?
I'll report on that. I'm sorry to have all those numbers with me, but it does appear we're ahead of.
I can't hear.
Oh, sorry. I don't, I don't have that report with me tonight, but principals are reporting that we're looking better than we were last year at this time, but there are still some openings. We do, for the public listening, we do have a lot of paraprofessional positions available for someone who's interested in a position like that, and there are cafeteria positions available, along with a number of teacher positions that have developed from people taking positions in other districts recently.
So you don't know how many, like, teachers in particular, you don't know how many openings are still available for the staff?
Every, every day it changes, so I wouldn't want to tell you a number, it could be off.
Right. I just think with an update on our school readiness, that would have been good information. And my last question, we had talked about some furniture purchases, particularly interested in the broken cafeteria tables. I believe it was the Bartlett School, they had metal sticking out. Do we know if that, I mean, I know there's been supply issues in a lot of areas, but do we know if that furniture was purchased and in place? Do we know anything about that?
Dr. Hall?
Mr. Underwood's still working on that, as he reported at our previous meeting to this, they have been diverted to other items, so he hasn't addressed furniture in particular over the last two weeks, but I can get an update on that from him as well.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Chun?
Thank you, two questions. One will be, will the air conditioning system be ready for most of our schools? Because I know that we still, you know, still in the middle of summer, are we ready to welcome our families and our staff, I mean, our students and our staff during this time? And my next question would be in terms of health and immunization, and, and you, when you're saying that, they have the onsite, is that the one where the Lowell Community Health Centers, that's where the families can go to, correct?
Yes, so the, thanks for those. The city's organizing vaccine and shot clinic through the health department, and in regards to the air conditioning, very few of our schools have full air conditioning systems. We do have one particular problem with the Stock Losa School, which does have a good system, it's not fully operational now. There is a part that's been on order, and we've been trying to get it fixed, but that quite isn't working as we'd like, but we anticipate it's going to be fixed over the next week.
One more, I'm sorry, it's just one of those things. And will there be any information to our families where they can go get those immunizations for our students?
Yes, we hope that'll roll out next week.
Okay, and with Lowell Community Health Center, I know you, you just mentioned, Ms. Phillips, that we're partnered with Lowell Community Health Center. Do they have to be a patient of the Lowell Community Health Center, or anyone that's, you know, students and family that would like to participate and get their kids immunized, can go there as well?
Yes, so since immunizations are required for school, that's something that Lowell Community Health Center can provide, you know, without having to register for, for, you know, their services, past immunizations?
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Thompson?
I have a question for Mr. Hall and then one for Mr. Skinner. Mr. Hall, what, how are we doing on our behavioral health hires? That was obviously something we had set aside a lot of money for, and I know it was a hard, really, we kind of even changed the titles just so we could get some people in, so I'm just curious how we're doing on that front.
We have had a few social worker and guidance counselor hires roll in over the last few weeks, but we do still have a lot of openings that we can fill, there just doesn't seem to be the supply in the community to fill all those positions, but we're still working on it, and I hope that we're gonna have most of them filled. I did have, one thing I forgot, Ms. Doherty, the Bartlett, we did get the tables in, so that did happen in the commotion of the last few weeks.
Okay, for Mr. Skinner, you mentioned, I think it was on the readiness timeline, step two, August 9th, you were able to get an assessment of the progress on facilities. Can we get that information? Whatever information that you got on the progress for the facilities preparation, I believe you said Lowell High took a little bit longer for you to get that information, but do you, is that something that is prepared that you could then send on to us?
Yes, we can, we can actually send to you an updated dashboard as, as we move closer to school opening, and that might be the best, best way to inform, and then if there's any questions from the committee, certainly, as you look at that dashboard, if you have questions. I think in, I get messages continuously, as, as I mentioned, it's all hands on deck. So one of the mentions that I had is from our staff that's doing this work, is just to praise the committee that there are many other people that are not accountable to the district that also play into some of these deadlines. So one is from our data team, DESI plays a part in terms of whether we can roll over the data and how quickly we roll over the data to the next school year, so there's some sign-offs from DESI there. So I quoted August 15th, that's our plan, based on what we're hearing from DESI, but if DESI's late on that, as you heard from Dr. Hall with the air conditioning, that works with DPW and the supply chains on the parts on the air conditioning, as you heard from Ms. Phillips, that's in partnership with Community Health and also the Lowell Health Department in terms of immunizations, and the facilities work, works across that. So, Ms. Thompson, if it's amenable to you, I'll update the committee. We go through, particularly as our principals come back and do deep dives into all of their school opening needs, we start to actively update the dashboard almost hourly. That becomes the bane of Mr. Skinner's existence, starting, starting next week and making sure that he's helping to liaise that work from the school. So if it's amenable to you, Ms. Thompson, that might be the best way, and we'll get you an updated school opening dashboard at regular intervals, so you can see where the work's falling. Does that work for you?
It does, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and really to, to further, take Ms. Thompson's concerns to the next, to the next date. I mean, I look at the, you know, I know this is just a snapshot of what the dashboard looks like, but in, in my mind, if we're calling this dashboard, that's a public document, that's a live document, that people have access to all day, every day. It seems to me that it would be a really compelling thing for this to be provided on our website, so that not just the committee, but families and teachers and, and other stakeholders in the community would be able to see a visual representation of how we are preparing for school. I don't know what, you know, in terms of being able to, to get this up on the website as a, as a true dashboard, what our capacity would be, but I mean, again, putting myself in the position of being, whether it's a parent who's sending my child, or a teacher who's going to be returning to, to a school, to be able to see these very exciting blocks turn from yellow to green, and I get the excitement. I mean, I think that that would be a really, it would be a great thing for our community to be able to track progress and be able to see that visualized in a, in a true dashboard, in a true live and transparent dashboard.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you.
Any comment?
We'll work towards that. I, I think one thing that I certainly can commit to without even consulting with our IT team is a, a regular upload of the static dashboard. The live, yeah, something live that's running through the cloud where people can see it by minute, that might be something for next year, but certainly, we can do a weekly upload or something along those lines, so we, you can see each, each week. As we, again, as we get principals back, that's where we start to really dig deep into, you know, is, is each nuance of it. So right now, it's managed by our cabinet chiefs in each division head, and then our principals start to weigh in as they come back to contract.
Any other comments or questions? Here will none, we'll now go to the next item on the agenda, nine point two.
Can I ask one question?
Good, Mr. Rossi?
I'm sorry, I just was curious about the high school schedules and whether or not if there are mistakes, whether they can be identified in time for school to start, because I know personally from last year, there were a lot of scheduling issues, so I was just curious in terms of that.
So Ms. I don't know, we can understand you perfectly, Mr. Superintendent? Were you able to catch that?
I did, so Ms. Del Rossi's question was around student schedules and our rostering at the high school, which is always a complex endeavor. There is, they are, Ms. Del Rossi and committee members, those are on track as, as of yesterday. Check in with Head of School, Fiato, those are on track as, as of yesterday, ahead of where they've been in prior years. This is, for committee members that have been on the committee each year, is, this is an area for improvement and continuous growth. So Mr. Fiato has been focused on that, he's ahead of schedule from where they were last year, Ms. Del Rossi, I, well, Ms. Del Rossi, you were a teacher at the school last year, so, yes, we're ahead of schedule from where we were last year. We feel good with where we are based on the reports from the head of school, and we're continuing to focus on supporting the school through that process, so understood with what you experienced as a teacher last year, and our goal would be continuous improvement there, Ms. Del Rossi, and we're getting reports that it will be improved this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
No other comments, questions? We now go to nine point two, update on capital improvements, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is another area that we're going to continue to update the committee on, but does not relate to school opening. So there's two parts of facilities that I think it's going to be important for us to separate, hence the reason to separate these two reports out. Our capital projects are large-scale facilities improvement, whereas our school opening facilities will be redoing floors in gymnasiums, waxing the floors in classrooms, all of the furniture needs set up for students, cafeteria set up. So we have the custodial needs for opening and then capital improvements. Many of these items are not going to be there for the first day of school, but they're continuously tracked. Dr. Hall, if you can share the update for the committee on the various long-term capital improvement projects that the committee has previously approved?
Sure, in this memo dated August 5th in bold, there are updates from the last report, which I think might have occurred two meetings ago. Of note, you can see in the back, there's a picture of the, one of the newly installed playgrounds, as you can see, at the Cardinal O'Connell Early Learning Center in the Bartlett. There were playgrounds installed, which were delayed because of, I guess, the material for the ground to soften it if someone tripped on the playground, there was a delay in obtaining that, but those are now in. However, you can see the STEM, there was some missing welding hooks, so that was scheduled to be installed this week. The contractor is still telling us that the climbing apparatus should be able to be safe by the start of school, and it will be fully installed by that point. And, and within this report, also, you can see what's going on with the HVAC study, the status of the COLI modulars, the city does have an OPM in place now directing that, and the bidding process for the STEM, and the committee soon will be reviewing a permission to enter in regards to costs associated with that. Subject to your questions, I don't have anything more on that, Dr. Boyd?
I think, Your Honor, through you to Dr. Hall, as you know, we just had a joint facility subcommittee meeting where we talked about not doing the HVA study, the assessment. So is that the one you're, is that the same study that you're referencing here that's?
Yeah, so I guess on that study, Ms. Doherty, the contract for the detail is at City Hall, it's not signed yet, but it's pending a few signatures, so my understanding is it still could be stopped.
So I think that we probably need to suspend the rules and take a vote tonight on that, based on report, you know, reporting out on this, the facility's subcommittee motion. And we don't have to do it right this minute, but I think that I don't want to move forward with. with signing this if we're going to substitute with a different study, which was what came out of the joint facility subcommittee meeting tonight. And Dr. Boyd has concern. I'm open to hear your thoughts on this, but I certainly don't want to have the city sign this and then come back and say, "The joint facility subcommittee made a different recommendation tonight."
Yeah. So I believe I was, I believe I came in when the committee took that action, so I certainly understood the committee's action. The only caution I want to provide the committee is with every facility motion and adopted item by the committee, we have received feedback from various interest groups around the community, including one in particular that questions the OMA allowability of those acts. So I don't, I would caution the committee on a suspension of rules for that particular action unless the motion is simply to put on hold, not to sign the contract. I would like to be able to bring back to you some more details, and I don't want to guide the committee in the wrong direction. The United Teachers of Lowell did put us on notice with one particular action the committee had taken, with it was a motion on the floor that wasn't posted previously. And they've notified us that they have particular interest in every facility's motion. So with that, if the motion is just to formalize, not going forward and to notify the legal department not to sign off on the other contract, I would limit it to that.
I'm open to hearing thoughts from my colleagues. I'm not against proceeding with caution to not move forward with a decision that hasn't been properly posted based on a meeting that happened earlier.
Before, ask for a second. Any opinions or comments by other members? Ms. Martin, you have a question?
I just wanted to ask, so the item that you're referring to is listed on that sheet? So it's included in the materials that were posted to be discussed tonight?
Yeah, I think suspending that one would be sufficient. If you were saying we're taking action on that, I would, what I'm cautioning is to already adopt moving in a different direction with a different expenditure that we haven't yet determined what the cost was, which was the item that was approved by the subcommittee. If there's going to be a separate, which certainly seems like there's support on it, I would like to be able to bring that back to you formally noticed with the right amount of time if you're going to take an act to approve a separate expenditure. So putting a pause on this one, Ms. Martin, I think is, that certainly is, I think, without question allowable within OMA. But if you're going to take another step to approve another investment, I just wanted to provide the guidance to the committee that we have received requests and concerns from one of our community partners, being the United Teachers of Lowell, on OMA and following OMA with every investment in facilities. They've notified us they'd like to speak publicly on each of those items. So it's the will of the body. I just want to make sure I give you the guidance that, based on the request from our partners.
Ms. Martin, I think what I'm hearing too is that maybe to table item 9.2 to the following meeting, regular meeting as well, if Mr. Superintendent said to put on hold, which I agree, or just to formally table it, delay until the following regular meeting.
Yeah, I think we're going to, the request of the committee, as I understood it, just to, is if there's an ability for us to halt the contract with the HVAC assessment, the committee would rather go in another direction, which is, I believe, as I heard it, was an HVAC reconditioning report, is as I was hearing the terminology. I would like to be able to bring that back to you for formal vote with formal public notice, just so you don't have a question come back after the fact and you find yourselves in an OMA question. But again, I do think it was unanimously approved by the subcommittee, and certainly we understood the guidance to move in that direction.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I think we're looking at maybe hold this whole report or just this piece of it. But since we're on this report, I also have an issue with the facilities master plan RFP that was advertised. I don't recall ever having a formal vote on this item. I know it came up in the facilities subcommittee, and we voted unanimously to move forward the HVAC report. So I, this is a $500,000 plan, right? If I'm getting this. And this is where we, the issue of how we spend our facilities money, it's limited, it's time-sensitive. I think that's where a lot of these conversations with the city are, we're trying to get to the same page on this. So I have a concern with that one. So if we want to put this whole report to the next meeting when we have more information, we can post about the joint facility subcommittee meeting and what was moved tonight, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think that's, Mr. Mayor, if I could, there's not an expenditure or an allocation of funds. There is and was a recommendation, as I mentioned to the committee before, from 2018 by the state. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did notify the Lowell Public Schools in 2018, 2019 that we were absent in our report availability because we did not have a five-year capital improvement plan, facilities master plan. The last one that was done was in 2014. So we put out the RFP to see what those costs would be. It would be up to the committee as to whether the committee's going to approve that. I do believe it's my responsibility as a superintendent to act on the recommendations from the Department of Education and provide guidance to the committee. So we put out the RFP. There's no cost other than staff time to do that. I've allocated the staff time to put forward that RFP. Once we get responses to that, we would bring it back to the committee in terms of whether the committee wants to invest in that. But I do believe it's my responsibility as your superintendent to bring back those recommendations. That came from the state's district-wide review, as I provided to the committee reminder on July 20th. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty, any thoughts on that? So are we, would you have any request to bring back the report for the following meeting? Or you want to accept the report today as a report of progress in its entirety? Or you want to take some part of it out? Or what would your request and what would you support? And so, and Mr. Superintendent, I think the best way would just to accept the report of progress today, right, would be the?
Yes, it's a report of progress.
This is a report of progress.
I would caution the committee to take a formal action that would lead to an investment of funds.
Right.
Right.
This is just a report of progress.
But not move forward with the HVA study. That's the really important thing. We don't sign a contract for a study if we're changing what we're investing in terms of.
If it can, we're going to, I, Dr. Hall, I would say, no contract with the law, if it can, if we were to.
Sure. I've contacted Mr. Baldwin already to let him know what I'll contact the solicitor to.
Can I just ask? We haven't signed it. So I mean, we do, right? I mean, that's our permission to enter. We sign all these contracts.
You should, you should, you should be, my understanding from the data I have is that it hasn't been signed off on, that you should be able to halt it. I just don't want to provide inaccurate information. So we, I want to accept the guidance of the committee, and I want to make sure I can research it and provide you clarity. So it is, as of right now, with the information we have, we believe we can halt it, and that's what Dr. Hall's working through. That's what Dr. Hall's working through now. So Ms. Martin, you're accurate that the committee signs that and hasn't come to you. So my hope would be is that we have the authority to halt it where it is.
Okay. So again, just for clarity, the vote for the report, just a report of progress, no action to be taken? Everybody agrees on that? Okay. If, any other comments relevant to this matter? Okay, we now go to 9.3, response to motion 01, CFO of 4622 by Mr. Rossi, regarding line item budget from Munus. Mr. Rossi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mayor Chow. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I just had some questions in regards to the abbreviations. One was SLA and the other one on page 37. It was really hard for me to understand in terms of that. So I just would like to ask if maybe you could do like an abbreviation list so it's clearer or maybe just explain verbally also, I guess, whatever's easier.
Ms. Superintendent?
Hi, can you tell me again what was the first abbreviation that FLA you said?
S, S as in Sam, SLA.
Where do you see that? Is that on the memo, the memo portion or the actual report?
It's on, it's on the report.
Do you have a page number that, I'm trying to see if I can find SLA.
It was on a couple of them where then it went to kindergarten. I could tell it was kindergarten teacher or it was on a couple of them. But then on page 37, there was an INTR. There was a couple of things that I really had no clue what they were, so I was wondering if they could just be clarified.
Sure. Yes, what I can do is look through the report and try to see what abbreviations are listed there. Unfortunately, because the accounting system only has so many failed, I mean, so many spaces in a field, they often have to abbreviate, but I can go through it and see if I can find it. I can also call you to see where exactly you've noticed some of them to make sure that you have a full understanding of what's in the report.
Thank you. I'll get in touch with you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Another, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for this report. And I want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So you're looking at the previous year-to-date, right? So you're going till the end of June 30th and looking item by item at where we stood. Is that correct?
Exactly. In this report, now going forward, I can always provide on this report and then give you an update like quarterly or monthly, whatever.
I think that would be great.
Right.
So my question then is, if you look on, and there's a couple of pages, I noticed it, but I think just for tonight's purposes, just for speed, let's go to page 17 where you have one, some items that are at like 32% spent or 52% spent, like the special education ones, and then you have one that's 207%. So that means you doubled in spending for that line item. Is that correct?
Yes. So in the 207% was a line item that had Knowledge Bowl, right? And then, so the Knowledge Bowl expenses, we ended up transferring money out, so it looked like there was only 2.9 million in there because we charged, like whenever we do Knowledge Bowl, we often charge it to a grant. So let's say we move the money out through a transfer process with you guys, and then someone else charged to the line, say if they did charge a Knowledge Bowl expense, it looks like it's overspent. So on the memo that's attached to it, it refers to how we have to do a cleanup. This is the type of thing that we do throughout the year. Whenever we see that there's going to be a surplus in one line, we ask you to move it to another line, right? So in this particular case with the 207%, if you follow the 207 to the left, you'll see that we originally had $24,000 for Knowledge Bowl. We moved out $21,000 because that was what was remaining after we paid for Knowledge Bowl with the grant. But one of the bills must have come in and still hit that line and not the grant, and so that would look like it's overspent. These are the type of things we clean up at this time during the year with the city auditor. So all of the transfers are being done now. This was done as of June 30th, just so that Mr. Del Rossi could see what the report would look like.
Right. So can I follow up with another question? So then, when you have, so you might have an item, like if you go to page 28, you have overtime, 374.9%.
Yep.
And then overtime custodian, overtime man-out, 371.6%. So that's like three times what was budgeted for overtime.
Absolutely.
So you need to then pull those funds from another place?
So here's, so I'm going to go back to page 17 and, so I can answer the rest of those questions and what you just said. So on page 17, there are several examples of, you know, when we build our budget, when we build our budget, we build it with average salary so that a school that has older teachers are not getting penalized. So you know, we build the budget and we enter, if there's four teachers, we do four times $86,000, put that in the account. If they end up having older teachers, those accounts look like they're in the negative throughout the year. If you have younger teachers, it looks like there's a surplus throughout the year. So we clean that up periodically throughout the year. But, so on page 17, those could be just that someone else was hired that was cheaper than the previous person that was in that seat, right? But on page 28, as you just referenced, those are actually true deficits that I did not cover because we wanted to see it, right? They, we did truly spend that much in overtime due to COVID, all the people out in COVID with custodians, that's what man-out and all of those are. So those are in true, they are truly overspent by that amount. So all of the overtime accounts are at that level.
Right. And I think it was day-to-day subs that also had a big increase.
So day-to-day sub did end up, at first, we thought, when we would do projections, we looked at, oh, we're going to have tons of money in this account. But then, as you know, we increased the rate and got a significant improvement with the number of subs we had. So yes, that was one of the line items that had a shortage, whereas long-term subs had a surplus. But these are the things that we do all throughout the year historically. We've done it where we do it, we start asking you for transfers in January. This year, we're going to start coming in October showing you the vacancy savings. X amount of positions were not filled. One of the reports or motions that I did for you with the vacancy savings, it was, it's very difficult to say to you what were the open positions. That changes day-to-day. Today, I could have four powers, I could hire three more tomorrow, that would be seven tomorrow, and two could quit the following day. So every day, my list of open positions varies. So we'll do it, instead, we'll do it quarterly for you so that you can see the vacancy savings as we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or question? Here will none. We now go to the next item on the agenda, 9.4, response to motion 5, CFO of 5422 by Mr. Rossi, regarding additional funding for SEL. Mr. Rossi? Mr. Rossi, you might be on mute.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay. I guess I was just looking, I saw in the memo the amounts allocated, but I guess maybe I didn't freeze it right. I guess I was looking for more specific programming that, I see the amounts allocated for it, but I'm also looking for significant programming that it's going towards for our students who are in desperate need of social, emotional skills and due to the crisis of COVID. So I guess I was looking for more of a breakdown of that, of where the funding is going towards also. But thank you for providing the report, and I see where the breakdown is. I should have been more specific in my motion, I think, though.
Any other comments or questions? Here will none. We now go to the next item on the agenda, 9.5, response to motion 6, CFO of 5422 by Ms. Thompson, regarding diversifying contractors and partnerships. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you for this report. I guess, and I knew this was going to be a complicated matter, but when I brought it up to you, I guess my concern, confusion was in the response that I'm not exactly sure how it relates to school districts, which is not a you thing, because you didn't write that. I guess I'll, to truly be able to speak on this, I guess I have to wait for the full scope. I know that there's going to be a part two of the report. I guess I am also curious as to how often the supplier list is updated on their end because, again, you might be working with suppliers that have been around for a gazillion years, and that's fine. But, you know, I'm just curious, I guess, as to their process. So when you get that additional, and I'm glad there was, I guess, there's a webinar coming up that you'll be attending. I was also curious, is that, is that something that I could attend, or is that something that is just open for someone like yourself?
Yes, it is actually a complicated but very worthwhile project. If we, we have a lot of contracts, and they don't indicate on our summaries, so we have to go digging. So what I did is I did a sampling just so that I could give you something, being that I promised that at the last meeting. And then, but what I realized is the business office, we have Um, and then, but what I realized is, the business office, we are, um, we have, we keep track of contracts, right? But we don't keep track of all the partnerships, so what I did is sent out an email to department heads and principals asking for any and all of their partnerships that they have. I've had about ten respond, so I'll send a follow-up again, and many of them are indicating whether they're woman-owned or minority-owned. Some of them may not know what their part, the part, who owns the partnership, right? But anyway, I will have that type of list, and yes, you most certainly could join that promote and diversity using chapter thirty-B. The webinar that, um, I mentioned in the memo was to explain that I'm limited by chapter thirty-B. It's a state law and it says, if we go out to, um, for three quotes, I have to go with the lowest quote, even if we would prefer to give a local, um, person, a woman or a, um, you know, it, one way or the other, we cannot do that. We have to follow the lowest bid or the lowest, um, quote rules. However, that webinar that you and I both can attend, and I'll make sure that you're listed as a register, um, regi- you know, a registrar, but um, that is going to teach us how to use chapter thirty-B to still diversify our, um, vendors.
And I appreciate that. I think my last comment, and again, this is not a you thing, this is a process thing. Um, they need to stop using the term minority.
They do, okay.
Because the term minority means a lesser than, and again, I think it's, I'm not saying you, I'm saying this is something you see across grants. You see it everywhere. So, you know, the, what I try to tell people is it's people of color, because I'm assuming when they say minority, it should also really include the LGBTQ plus, um, population, because technically that's a, a, a group that is not considered in the masses. So that's something that, again, I will probably bring to them when, when we have the meeting, but it is just an important, just a, a thing to be thinking about as well.
Well, I thank you, because my kids often tell me that words that I grew up with in the eighties are now, are now not acceptable with, you know, simple things, you know? So, um, this is something I would have been told by them, so thank you. I, I didn't know that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Here on nine, here on down, we now go to the next item on the agenda. Nine point six, response to motion seven CFO of six fifteen twenty-two by Ms. Doherty regarding vacancy savings. Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So I, this is very helpful, and I mean, you start by saying you don't actually have a vacancy savings line, but yet we've had motions to transfer funds, and when we asked where was it funded from, it was from vacancy savings. So I think if we could try to do like you're doing with the other budgeting stuff, a quarterly report on vacancy savings. But what was particularly of interest to me that you don't mention here was the social worker investment. Like we, I, I think it was over two million dollars to hire twenty-eight more social workers, and I don't see it listed here as you had listed some of the positions that were either not filled or only partially filled that made up for some of that savings. So did we fill all social worker positions that we had budgeted for?
So two points of clarification. Um, one, you're right, there, that it may seem confusing when we say from vacancy savings. Vacancy savings are coming from multiple lines, so you'll often see these transfers and you'll see tens or hundreds of accounts, and it's me trying to take fifty dollars from this line, fifty dollars from this line, oh, I had saved two thousand from that line. So that's what we mean when we say vacancy savings, or, um, so if you hire a younger teacher, that's cheaper. Or if we have a position that didn't get filled until October, there's money in that account, right? If I'm expected to pay hu- a hundred and, a hundred thousand for the year and we don't hire until twenty percent in, we only are going to spend eighty. So the vacancy savings is not one particular line, it's me going through and identifying where the surpluses are, right? So that's what, what we mean by that, and that will start to come to you quarterly. And as far as the, um, social workers, I'm not sure exactly how many were filled, but here's why you're not seeing it in here. When I did this report, it was based upon our general fund. We had decided to sta- um, move the social workers to ESER. So that's another point that I have to make right now. Like when I look at vacant positions and give you the transfers, it's usually based only on general fund vacancies. I would not have included grant funds because we're allowed to, um, reallocate or carry funds forward, things like that. So that's why you wouldn't have seen that, the social workers.
Could I follow up? Your Honor, okay.
Ms. Doherty, yes.
Um, so I think it would be helpful to know, um, of those positions that we had voted to use ESER money for, how many are still not filled, because we have had such a staffing crisis, not just Lowell, obviously it's happening across the district, which is why I was disappointed to not be able to know where we stand with teacher hiring, para-hiring, um, what was the other one? Cafeteria, everything that we need in front of our students in three weeks. Uh, I know these numbers change, but we have a meeting to give us what's the most updated information. So I think it would be very useful to, for the committee to know of those positions that we had voted to fund, how many were filled or how many still are outstanding at a point in time. You know, like as of this day before your next meeting, these are the number of positions. Um, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, um, there are two things. I just want to point out that what you voted on last year may have changed now because through the Fair Student Funding Process, if we had given an additional social worker, most of the schools elected to keep it. But when we gave them the supplements, don't forget, we also gave them the autonomy to spend it in whatever way. So it wouldn't match up with what you necessarily voted on last year, it would match up with what we voted on for school, um, the current year budget, right? So that was what we just did recently in May. So what I can do, which I have been doing, because you know, when I first started and we talked about how that we have to build a lot of systems, right? A new, new systems, and then COVID hit, right? So one example is, we need a bridge between HR and finance, so the, and there's a position control with Munis, and it would actually list ten paras, and then it would show whether the ten boxes were, um, filled, the ten seats. Currently, we don't have that in place, but we have an archaic system. So I can do for you, until we do implement this position control, um, module with Munis, I can do it the old-fashioned way, which is what, how I do it. I ta- take the budget, I put budgeted FTEs, and I run an actual payroll report. And so if it said ten paras for the Bailey School, and I only show seven, then I know that, where are those other three? Are they open or are they being, um, charged to long-term subs? So I did this old-fashioned messy type of spreadsheet, but if I share that with you, at least you can see that we're trying to track that. It's not going to be a pretty report, but I can still give you something. But I recommend, when you say one point in time, that we wait until at least school starts the first week, because right now, we could have hired a hundred teachers, but they wouldn't get paid until the first payroll, right? So if we wait until early September and then run this report, I can show you what I mean, and you can tell me to tweak it and give you this or take that out, you know?
Yeah, if I, if I could, I, I think you're gonna, you're gonna receive your first budget update here in October, I believe. I mean, you're, you're, you have two meetings, then you're going to get your first budget update. So I think any guidance, and I'll leave to the committee between now and then, if there's things that you would like to see in those ongoing updates, please feel free to send myself or Ms. Turner an email. We want to make sure that those budget updates for you are as comprehensive and thorough as possible. Uh, you heard Ms. Turner mention a couple of the adjustments we're planning to make this year, uh, within those updates in terms of how we're looking at transfers to make sure we can manage across. You're right, Ms. Doherty, the, uh, what was previously called the Great Resignation has now shifted into, uh, staffing shortages and into hiring challenges, and then we're hearing teacher shortages, so you're going to continue to hear this across as committee members, and we want you to be as apprised and as informed as possible. So if your budget updates would be places to get that, and if there's different sections you would like to see, um, we would certainly be amenable to that, and I know Ms. Turner's planning to, um, engage, uh, Mr. Lay as the Finance Subcommittee Chair to make sure that those updates are as informative as possible. You're gonna, it's, uh, sometimes surprising to hear how fast this moves. You're going to be getting your first quarter update in just a matter of a couple of meetings. So, uh, for efficiency purposes here, given the fact that you'll just continue to get the information from Ms. Turner, say she'll take it under advisement, I might suggest, feel free, uh, and there's no urgency on that. As the idea, as the thought, as your interest comes to mind, feel free to send the email, and Ms. Turner will share with you whether it can be done or it can't be done. Uh, but we do at this point plan to provide to you, within your quarterly updates, both general fund as well as ESER, as well as recommendations for transfers across, if there are, if we're seeing that the, the burn rate and the vacancy savings are not moving in the same trajectory as we should. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Ms. Martin?
Just to, to ask a clarifying question. My sense from this is that we're trying to go in a sideways motion using budget reports to determine HR realities. Am I correct in that you're looking to see a, a report that tells us how many open positions we have not yet filled in anticipation of September first? Okay, then, I'm sorry, you're right. Go ahead.
Any other comments, questions? Here on down, we now go to nine point seven, personnel report. Any report, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is just a standard report that's required of us to submit to the, to the committee on an ongoing basis, as is the home education report, uh, so we submit them as reports of progress. I believe there's a separate, uh, motion needs to be taken before you get to home education, uh, again, just by virtue of the law. The recommendation is that we accept, uh, separate reports nine point one through nine point seven as reports of progress.
Motion by, to adopt by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Chun, on fifty, I post a note, I have it. Motion's carried. Now go to nine point eight, home education. Any comment? Here on down, need a motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Seven yeas approved.
We now go to ten, new business. We already taken up ten point one, we now go up to ten point two. Update to student handbook for school year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. Any comment, Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to, um, ask about, I know we are providing high school students with bus passes, and it was budgeted at twenty dollars a bus pass, and that, you know, that's a monthly fee. Well, on the website, it said the student cost is twenty-five dollars, so I just don't know if they've given us a discount or if we've budgeted properly for the cost.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You budgeted a lump sum amount to allow for that flexibility if we need to, so we didn't budget per week. Uh, the committee, I'm sorry, didn't allocate as a, on a per-student basis. You allocated on an estimate on an overall. I believe that overall, Ms. Turner, was approximately a million dollars, uh, which we actually thought allowed you that cushion in case there's variability, because we too have the concern that LRTA might find the challenge of bus driver shortages and so on, uh, as they're moving through. Uh, Mr. Dakota, our Transportation Director, has been in conversations on how to operationalize, um, the committee's decision and to make sure we can support kids. If there's a need to bring back to you for additional allotment, uh, we'll bring that back to you. But right now, you approved a lump sum, up to a million dollars, uh, for that, uh, initiative, not on a per-student basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Here on down, need a motion to approve the update to the student handbook for twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Ten point three, approve.
Seven yeas approved.
Uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Clarity for the minutes. Uh, we're going to also include the committee's previous, um, motion and adoption of the updated graduation requirements within the handbook as well, given the committee's act tonight. So just want to make sure I clarify within the minute, so, uh, the handbooks that you have within tonight's minutes will also then be, will add to it the committee's action tonight on the graduation requirements to specify for those classes that are impacted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ten point three, approval of job description and permission to post Director of Parent Family Leadership Institute. Any comment? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I wasn't able to attend the subcommittee meeting when this was discussed, which I know Ms. Del Rossi reported out on earlier. Um, I'm not in favor of really moving forward this institute, other than as was discussed at the subcommittee, which was to have it be part of adult education. I feel like we're spreading ourselves very thin. We're trying to start this institute. Um, I really want the focus to be on the improvements at the Family Resource Center, which I think we've made some, you know, good steps in that direction. So I just wanted to explain that I, I wouldn't be supporting to post for this position right now. I don't think the timing is right. Uh, I'm concerned that we've added over three hundred positions, uh, that we're just not going to be able to sustain when this ESER money goes away, so I really want to put the focus on family support and provide resources at our exceptional adult education program that we already have in place. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Do- Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, having made that, that recommendation, I agree. Um, my understanding is that those conversations have happened, so the, the, um, administration can respond to that. Um, I have a concern regarding the salary range and that this is listed as a non-affiliated position. We'd had that conversation during the subcommittee as well. Uh, my understanding was that there was going to be a conversation with, um, LSAA around this, and that that would, that conversation would then dictate what the salary was. So I don't know if that conversation has happened or where we at with that.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Typically, we post the jobs as unaffiliated, and the, uh, unions themselves lay claim to the jobs, uh, when they're a job that's not already classified within theirs, uh, so they'll lay claim to the position, and then the position will be, um, and then it'll be negotiated with them if it is within the confines of the law for that particular, uh, union. In this case, we have a couple of different unions that could potentially lay claim, given the nature of this position. I don't believe it's, uh, Dr. Hall, I don't believe this is within the, the law for any particular union. Have you had any unions lay claim to this at this point?
I haven't yet, no.
So my recommendation would be that we follow our standard protocol, and we allow the unions themselves to make a determination if they lay claim. Uh, one example that I might give the committee, the Lowell Teacher Academy Director. It's a director position, but that's actually within UTL. UTL, uh, claimed that position even though most directors are within. That was years and years back. That's worked well. No objection from LSAA on that one. I don't know what's going to occur here, but that's the reason for our standard protocol of unaffiliated and allowing the unions to claim, lay claim. I do think, Ms. Martin, as you mentioned, it seems like LSAA. I don't want to define it for them, however, the unions would have to define it for themselves.
Ms. Martin?
So in terms of our conversation again at the subcommittee, the, um, I'm looking at the salary level. How does that compare with what was presented at the subcommittee?
Ms. Phillips?
Um, Ms. Martin, I haven't changed the salary on, on the document.
And the conversations we had regarding trying to open up the, um, requirements so that we could attract a broader pool of candidates? Did that happen?
Yes, that did change.
So then we went from a, a master's degree position to a bachelor's position?
Yes, that's correct.
With no corresponding change in the salary?
So the experience should be commensurate with the, the, um, requirements for the position. So not having a master's doesn't mean that you can't work at the level that's required, because many community positions may not require a master's. That is preferred for positions, but it's not required. But if you didn't have a level of experience that would be parallel with the master's, then your, your payment, well, one, you may not get the position, but two, your salary, um, you know, would be reflected in whatever salary you'd be assigned.
So you changed the salary based on?
No, 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 I didn't change the salary, but based on the discussion around master's degree versus bachelor's degree, that changed to provide more flexibility.
Without a corresponding change in the salary range?
Right, and if I, if I could share, one of the concerns I do have is when we apply unnecessary licenses or degrees to certain positions rather than looking at the, the, um, work experience that candidates bring to the work, bring to the role. I do think as, um, from an equity perspective, that can narrow your pool. And so I do think it's really important, um, especially for a family, community position, that we do look at the experience that someone brings and not just the, um, the degree that they've acquired.
So referring back to the subcommittee, um, when we did discuss lowering the requirements to sp- to specifically address that concern, that we wanted to ensure that we had a broader pool and we didn't wanna put any additional, um, whether it was in education or other certification requirements attached to this.
So I don't see removing the degree requirement as lowering expectations for what the person brings to the position.
Okay. So what I'd like us to be able to do is, um, ensure that as we're promoting this, this posting, um, that we are able to, you know, ultimately, and I, I think I had expressed this at the, at the meeting as well, um, you know, the, the kind of perfect candidate for this is someone who is a parent-in-law, is someone who is a part of our school, uh, our school community. And wanting to have, uh, the opportunity to have as broad, uh, uh, again, as broad a, a net as we possibly can to ensure that we have somebody coming into that position. So just to be clear, I feel like what we discussed wasn't represented and, and hasn't been, um, actuated in this, in this, uh, offering here. So, but it will be up to the committee to, to vote to post or not.
Any other comment? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share the similar concern with Ms. Martin in term of the, um, salary range. Just to be fair with the teachers who has a master's degree, uh, how long, five years experience, how much would that teacher, uh, could earn? So, so I feel that the salary range for 120, uh, would that be equivalent to like a vice principal, uh, range? If that's the case, uh, I, I feel that, um, I, I just wanna see if we can adjust the salary. That way we don't have a controversial with the, uh, with the teachers who have been here so many years, more than, more than five years, uh, and, and have a master's degree and could not even earn that much.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, if I could, I would like to withdraw this item. It sounds like it needs some additional work. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know that it's, um, uh, we've got some other business to move through within the agenda at 8:42 tonight. If it's amenable to the committee, I would rather just withdraw this item and I'll, uh, Ms. Doh, Ms. Martin, I'll give you a call tomorrow to make sure I can work through and understand the subcommittee's intent. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you and if that's okay with the committee, uh, I'll just hereby withdraw this item. Thank you.
Withdrawance accepted. Thank you. No other comments? We now go to 10.5 budget transfer. Any comments or question? This is 10.5. Oh, we didn't do 10.4? Oh, okay. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Thank you. All right. I thought that might save us time, but 10.4, vote to accept but expend allocated fiscal year 22 award. Any comment, Ms. Doherty?
Vote to accept.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Now we go to 10.5 budget transfer. Any comments or questions? Here we now need a motion to approve the budget transfer for 312,005.25 by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin? Um, excuse me. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
10.6, uh, Mr. Rossi.
Seven yeas approved.
I have to learn to delay with a zoom. 10.6, motion to approve the doctoral research proposal for Janet Cozer by Ms. Chun, second by Ms. Doherty. If no other comments or question, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
10.10, 10.7, motion to approve the doctoral research proposal for Jason McCruven by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Mon. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
10.8, motion to approve the doctoral research proposal for Kimberly Gonzalez by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
11 communications, motion to accept the communication and to place it on file by Ms. Mon, second by Mr. Lay. On favor, say aye, post a, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's actually a motion requested here, just a motion for a subcommittee meeting of the Personnel and Labor Relations, uh, given many of the pertinent discussions that the committee had here. I don't need to belabor that point, but I think there's a request here from, uh, Dr. Hall for that subcommittee. Our policies require there to be a motion of the body in order to convene that subcommittee.
I'd make a motion to request that the administration pull to hold a Personnel Labor Relations Subcommittee.
Motion by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty. On favor, say aye, oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion's carry. Before we adjourn, I would like to make a suspension of the rule to revisit my motion earlier. Let me just look for the motion. It was to naming the, uh, the floor to request the school committee to temporarily waive the ad hoc subcommittee requirements under policy FF and authorize the superintendent to begin the process of naming the basketball court at Lowell High School after Ramon Rivera and at time Ms., um, Martin, um, asked question about the urgency of the situation. I was not aware of any urgency at the time. Uh, afterward, I received some information that they are going to complete the gym this Friday with paintings, um, among other things. So I would like to suspend the rule to reconsider this motion, second by Ms. Mon. And any questions or concerns with this? If, yeah. Ms. Doherty?
I'm sorry, just clarification. What is the urgency?
They, they're gonna complete, my understanding, they were totally complete painting the floor, among other things, to complete the, um, the gym. You know, it's gonna pretty move quick, pretty quickly.
So because it's gonna be completed, we have to have it named?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yeah. Other things.
I believe the, I believe the request here is to have, um, have, have there be some recognition of, uh, of the gentleman for whom the court's named after in painting, in name painted, uh, the, one that comes to mind for those of you that are college basketball fans, Coach K Court in, uh, for Duke. It's pretty prominently painted on the court, uh, in recognition of that, of that coach. I'm gonna assume, Mr. Mayor, that's probably the intent of the council, to have something memorialized within the painting on the court before it's finished. Once you do that, if you have to finish the court afterwards, you would have to strip it all the way down in order to paint it, 'cause they put a layer on, so it would be a year delay after you do the, we strip them each year, but it would be a full year if we don't get it before the waxing. Now, uh, there's, I can move as quickly as the committee, uh, wants on that to try to check it down and see if we can do that. Uh, but I believe that's the intent, Mayor?
Uh, that it is, and, um, like I said, uh, before, this was, uh, not only unanimously supported by the council members, but by the community as well. And as you've seen, it was, uh, well, we're going to recognize, uh, in remembrance of, uh, Mr. Rivera, who was a major, um, figure in that time, has big impact to many of the kids and to the basketball program in Lowell. Pretty much put the, uh, the Lowell High School basketball program on the map, uh, you know, with the NBA, and it's, it's, it's an honor, uh, for all of us, for the school to, and for, it's a, it's quite, it's quite a, a role model that he had with the kids throughout his entire life. So the Sure. So, so the motion is to, is to reconsider. Is that right? To, to reconsider what we Okay. So, so it'd be, so, so it wouldn't be a reconsideration, it'd be a new motion.
I've been reconsidering it since
Okay.
Consider it reconsidered.
So the, so the motion to reconsider, you accept that? Okay. And now we have to make a new motion, correct? Okay. And the new motion, should I read the verbatim from what I had originally or? How would you say that? Okay. If you could verbalize that in a, in a simple way, so I can take
You're gonna make it and you need a second.
Okay. I'm gonna, can the mayor make the motion or does somebody have to make the motion?
You can make it.
Okay, I can make the motion. Okay.
So the, I think how I would put the motion to read that the, to have the administration do the proper vetting process, um, in terms of, as Ms. Mon's concern was making sure that it can be named, there's no one else that's gonna be in jeopardy, um, and to move forward without having the ad hoc subcommittee.
Should I agree with Ms. Mon?
It's very easygoing to me.
Second by Ms. Mon. Let's do a roll call on this.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.